Next on our agenda is the public comment period. It's a 60-minute time limit, and it gives the -- it gives the public an opportunity for citizens to give input on any relevant issue not the subject of a public hearing and is not intended as a question-and-answer period. The public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes with a maximum of three minutes for any one speaker. Speakers may only speak once, and the speakers will be heard in the order in which they have signed up. Please be aware that this board will not tolerate direct confrontational remarks about any person, any member of the staff, or the board members. You will be asked only once to bring comments back in line. And the second time you will be asked to be escorted out of the boardroom. We will all act in a civil manner. Thank you. Shelley, do we have anybody signed up?
No one signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Final call. The public comment period is now closed. Next on our agenda is the report for the COVID-19 expenditures for Warren County. Mrs. Logan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At your desk I put up my latest spreadsheet of the departments and the totals for each department. We are at a total this month of $484,433.33. So that's not a huge increase from last month, and that was just for -- in the General Services Department, the expenditures for disinfecting and PPE mainly. So Mr. Farrell and I did have a phone call with FEMA today. We've been assigned a point of contact through FEMA, so we have been -- this is the first time that our locality had been assigned a point of contact, and we've been able to directly meet with them. So they did -- they do have new -- a new -- I don't know what to call it exactly. They have a program basically that passed where they -- through September 15th, everything that was purchased before September 15th and done qualifies as normal for the 75% federal cost share. Everything after now has to be directly related to first responder, PPE, law enforcement, fire and rescue. So Mr. Farrell and I are working out -- I'm separating out everything that was -- occurred before September 15th and after. Our biggest chunk of money has been through the General Services Department for local government facilities and through the schools, obviously, for reopening the schools. And most of their costs did occur May, June, July, August, and they were planning prior to that September 15th date because they opened before that. So I'm working on that, so I'll have a total of two separate pots. But we're continuing to track the expenses as we have been, talking to Dr. Daley, because you never know then that legislation or whatever you want to call it might change back. So once FEMA might make another policy change, so.
Has there been any discussion at all that you've heard that that might happen? I know that it's been.
No, sir. This is the first time we've actually been able to meet with our FEMA representatives and even learn about the September 15th policy change. So they took us through the -- it's a basically a seven-phase process of submitting all of our expenditures to FEMA, and they didn't talk about that, but I mean, we didn't know about this policy change. So it could very well occur, and then we find out.
Did it give you any indication that the things that we had in process were actually done correctly and?
Yes, we went over all of our expenditures, and we talked about the non-congregate care facility. We talked about the thermal shelter. We talked about the transportation for the buses that delivered the food, the meals all summer, and all of that does qualify. So and all of our PPE, all of the disinfectants, all of that qualifies. So I think we're in good shape. It's just from here on out, it's going to have to be through the fire rescue and law enfor -- and through Sheriff's Department really for the PPE and the disinfectants.
Okay.
So we're continuing to track all -- and it's good to have a point of contact now that we've been assigned through FEMA that I can directly reach out to and just run anything by them that we want to purchase, or if we want to start a new program, you know, whatever we're planning on doing, at least we have someone there willing to help us. But I, like I said, I think that everything we've been doing is good. We've been tracking all the -- you know, I have receipts for everything that's been purchased. We have the checks that have been -- had paid for the purchases, so we have everything together. So I think we're hopefully, we're in good shape. I think we're further along maybe than they even thought, so. But it's just what qualifies.
Okay. Any additional questions, concerns for Mrs. Logan?
Thank you, Taryn, for what you've been doing. And I'm assuming that the lion's share of this 484 came prior to September 15th anyway?
Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
Because it started in this date, I mean, it started in March, you know?
Right, March 1.
So and especially, I mean, that's when -- and right now, you'll see, it's not going up as fast as it was, the total amount, so definitely it's been, the majority was before September 15th.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Logan.
Thank you all. And thanks to Mr. Farrell, too.
Thank Mr. Farrell.
Next item on our agenda is the report. Board members, Mrs. Oates, would you like to start us?
Sure. This weekend, the Board of Supervisors, along with the staff at the county, participated in a strategic visioning event, and it was, it was an enjoyable and, I think, a very productive weekend. We spent Friday night and Saturday talking about our vision for Warren County and for how we can move that forward over the next few years. And so hopefully, in the very near future, you'll see a report come out of that event that will provide the community with our vision and our ideas about how we can move our community forward in the next several years. That's all I have. Chairman.
Thank you. I went to several meetings, actually went to one that didn't exist, so I felt pretty good about that. Means I was traveling really hard and way too fast. But I went to the Blue Mountain Homeowners Group. We had a good meeting. Lots of questions were answered, got to meet a lot of, a lot of good people. I was also part of the visioning group for the county, and that was exciting. And that's about all that I have for today. Mrs. Cullers?
I met with Lakefront Royal, their property owners association meeting. Met the prior weekend. Small group, but it was a good meeting. Those meetings are always good. Those, the board is working well with the community, and things are looking up up there. Went to the retreat, which I'd never been to a retreat, so I wasn't sure what to expect, but I was really pleased. It was positive. It's -- and I'm hoping if we do it again that we have a lot more of our staff, and I appreciate all the staff that were there. It was just really good. We are trying to get, and I'm sure if any of you live out where broadband and internet service is an issue, wanted to let you know that we have created a broadband committee, and we are looking for representative from each of our districts. I have one for mine, Mrs. Oates has one from hers, but we still need one from Fork District. We need one from Shenandoah District and Happy Creek District. So if you know anyone or if you have an interest, please reach out. The applications are online, or if you call in, some of the office staff will be glad to help you figure out how to apply. We want to have, with or without the other three members, we want to go ahead and have a preliminary meeting before the New Year, just as a meet and greet and figure out what date we want to start meeting in the New Year. I want to get this rolling as fast as possible because there's opportunities out there that if we don't get on top of, we may miss out on, and I think we need to take advantage of as many opportunities as there are to help pay for this as we can. The other thing, we are going to form on our next meeting in December, on December 8th, a committee to look into the concerns that people have brought up about the Shandor Farms area. And I have one person already that is going to work with me on that, and hopefully by that meeting, when it's formed, we'll have at least one other person. So we wanted to get that out as well. And that's all I have at this point.
Mr. Fox?
I too, I too also attended the Vision Advanced Seminar, and I think it'd be very useful going forward in many ways. Thank you.
Our interim city administrator, Mr. Daley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, we do not retreat. We had an advance, ma'am.
Advance. See, I've never been to one. I don't know what to call it.
Visioning advance.
Yes.
You have the monthly report in front of you. Would remind you about our fire chief selection. We will be doing our interviews this week. Sanitary district manager, we've done our second round of interviews. We will wrap that up this week. Finance director, you've met Mr. McLiberty, and he will begin work November 30th, a week from Monday. The FEMA update that Ms. Logan gave you has the issue with it of September 30th. That really doesn't change what we would do, but it does mean that we will now track our expenses different. But we are going to continue to provide protection for all of our employees and the things that we need to do. Other than that, that's the only real difference. As far as the reimbursement, I don't believe in a FEMA reimbursement until I see the cash. Until then, you never know how much you're really going to get, and they may very well at any time change the rules. They won't go back on September 15th, but they may go forward at any time. So we'll just keep track of that and see what happens. Anything that I can answer for you?
Do we really have a -- I understand concern is always a big issue that we have to deal with every day. Are we are, still have enough funds to do whatever we need to do as far as COVID goes?
Oh, yes, sir.
There's not going to be an issue with any shortages that we are aware of?
No, sir. There should be no shortage. The board has authorized the increase the level of expenditures up to $1 million. We're at about $484,000, $485,000. We've got five, we've got half a million dollars and about $15,000 extra. We're in good shape, sir.
Good. Glad to hear that.
We'll be just fine. I would not see any problem there.
Any other questions from the board?
Would remind you as a follow-up to the advance that you talked about, me having a very short work session on December 1st to review the action items, and Brandy and Rick will be presenting those, those six items you came up with, and they'll have the action plans for each one so that you can review them and then be able to vote on them December 8th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Our interim county attorney?
I have no report.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the appropriations and transfers. Do we have a motion on those?
I move to accept them as presented.
Any additional comments, concerns? Shelley, could we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Oates?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mrs. Cullers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the accounts.
I make a motion to approve the accounts as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or concerns? Roll call, please. Shelley?
Mrs. Oates?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mrs. Cullers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Shelley, could we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Oates?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mrs. Cullers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Thank you. Can't start before that, correct?
Uh-uh.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the, is the public hearings. We can't start before 7:30, so we could actually take a five or seven-minute break.
Well, we can do the.
Want to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Want to shift?
Let's go to I or J. We could be expeditious tonight.
Yeah, we will. Let's go to J. Item is, is the request for the purchase of all-band radios for stations four, five, six, and 10, as well as the fire chief and fire marshal. Chief Mayby? Catching you about an hour early. And at 7:30, we will have to stop you.
Yeah, you can.
I know, I won't stop you.
If it just works right, we'll be done by then.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm hoping we can get through that seven minutes because we spent about 30 minutes talking about it at a work session the other day.
Yeah.
And I appreciate y'all putting that on that work session so we could maybe save time tonight and you could understand it a little better. I do have a handout that, that we have put together. And this will be some of the certain positives of prudent, these radios for us this evening. Give one a mark on them. As we discussed the other night, this is about 10% of the department that, that we want to replace these radios for. We know, as, as Ms. Cullers would tell you, we followed up with a meeting that Friday talking about replacing the whole system for the fire and rescue department, as well as equipment in the sheriff's office and so forth, and I think we, we hung around that million-dollar mark, and certainly we aren't in that position to ask for this stuff tonight. So what I want to do is, is reiterate the key points on why we want to replace this. If you'll remember, I discussed mainly the London station that's so close to the Faukeer line that they routinely run into Faukeer. I haven't gotten the, I haven't gotten that back from communications yet, but my estimate would be better than 200 calls a year are into Faukeer, and that may be a little low because it seems like they're on 66th every day and so forth. So these enhancements and interoperability with, will enhance our radio communications with both law enforcement agencies in the county, the sheriff's office, and the town of Front Royal, which we do have some issues with. We operate really closely with them, and here lately, because of what the world we live in now, we, we're constantly doing mass casualty training, active shooter training, especially here lately, the potential for civil unrest and so forth, and at this time, we're swapping radios back and forth so that we can talk with each other because we're positioning medic units and fire trucks outside of that area so that we can quickly get them called in if we need to do that. It increases personal responsive safety. That was part of the presentation the other night, that sometimes we lose radio contact because our system doesn't go far into Faukeer's, and theirs doesn't come into Warren County hardly at all. So they've, they ran three calls in there today. One was a large brush fire, the other was a chimney fire, and we lose contact with them until they get back to the county line. We know we can't afford to do the things that we want, so I sat down and strategically located the, or chose the companies that would benefit the most because they're the closest to, you know, Faukeer and so forth. But, you know, these radios will allow us to communicate with all of the jurisdictions around us just by turning from one frequency to the other. So that's why eventually that they're going to ask for probably a total department replacement. We'll work on how to, how to fund that at a later date, and if we get this approved tonight and I'm able to enter into a contract with Motorola prior to January the 1st, we get a trade-in value for the radios that we're trading in. It's not a lot, but realistically, it's 50% of what the radios cost us to start with. After 15 years, that's probably not a bad trade-in. But again, it only adds up to $5,600, which will probably cost, which will probably cover the installation of the mobile radios into, into the apparatus. This money, after I discussed it with the county administrator, we, we found that the money would come from the CARES Act money that has been put into the general fund, if you will. Isn't that right?
It's not CARES Act money.
Oh, that's right. He swore, I swore to him I wouldn't say CARES Act, so can we go back a little bit? No CARES Act money. It's all general fund. So I'm here to answer any of your questions and see how we can proceed.
How much, how much time is it going to take to put together, instead of purchasing 10 radios, some sort of plan to where we could actually, over the next one, two, three-year period of time, to be able to get everybody on the same type of radio? I mean, is that something that we need to be talking about now, or are we just fixing this short-term need?
Right now, what I'm asking for tonight is to, is to fix the short-term need. We started a much longer term of conversation with both the sheriff's office and the fire department, and Ms. Cullers serves on that committee as well, and I think we went for, what, about an hour and a half or so the other day. We hit the highlights of what we would need and, and some of the, some of the costs, and one of the things is that, you know, the longer we wait, the more expensive it is going to be as well. I mean, we're buying, we would, we would be buying these right now off of a kind of Black Friday special, so to speak. And, you know, and certainly, we're not getting the discounts that we would get if we ordered 60 mobiles and, you know, 98 portables either. So that, that price would, would probably come down in the years that we were working on this. Now, we'll, we'll meet again, and we'll continue meeting until we narrow this down to just what we need, and then it'll really be back to the Board of Supervisors, the way we get the funding.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know if that answers your question.
It does.
I have a question.
Yes.
And, well, what you're doing now, would that fit in for long-term, that you can add on to this system that you're talking about and expand further in this, maybe the start of better communications?
Yes. I think it's what we're going to find out is our existing infrastructure, this radio will talk to ours, it'll talk to the sheriffs, it'll talk to Frederick Winchester, you know, all the units around us by, by virtue of, it'll talk to whoever we program into those radios. And it's just a matter, we go to, we go to Winchester, you turn it over, I mean, Frederick, for one example, we turn it over on Frederick's frequency, we can talk to them, just like we were one of theirs.
I know we talked, we talked a lot, and I had a lot of questions, and trying to remember, was this system or was it the system that Lieutenant Bergen was talking about where we could piggyback off of, was it Loudoun County that's getting ready to purchase and get a better discount, or was that his system?
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't piggyback on their system, so let's go.
No, but they're getting ready to buy some.
Sure. We would be able to piggyback on their, on their price.
Right.
If that means. And that's what we're doing now. Front Royal Fire Department just spent, I think, $55,000 because they have two new pieces of apparatus come in, and they've already upgraded to those, to this radio system. So we're piggybacking on them as well as a VITA contract, which is a state contract to, to get these prices.
Okay. And my other question, I understand, we talked at length about why you picked the companies you did, and I understand that. My, my question is Company One, who often responds with these, is not on your list. Is the, the thought process here of Company One goes to any of these areas, that they still will have the capacity to communicate with the current radio to the new ones, and they can just kind of relay whatever they're not being able to hear with their current radios from Faukeer?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, Company One doesn't go into Faukeer nowhere near that, that London does. Certainly, if they get a big enough incident, they will, and they have, and that's why I've included Shandor Shores, Company Five, because their, their tanker goes into, into Faukeer or Interstate 66 religiously, and some number 10 does because of their aerial ladder truck, that's why they're included, and so forth. So I tried to be pretty frugal in picking out the apparatus that normally goes into Faukeer. They'll make a liar out of me tomorrow by asking for 10's brush truck, but you can't cover them all.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that if Company One went, that there was still an ability for them to be able to communicate with their old radios, so they, they can relay. Like if I have a new radio and you've got the old, and I can hear Faukeer, I can relay onto you where you're not able to hear.
Sure.
And that will still work.
And we, in their case, they, they bought the radios for their new apparatus. Their old apparatus doesn't have it yet, but they included portable radios, so I mean, it's a matter of, if you think clear enough, you jump up in one of the new pieces and grab two or three portables, and you'll have that communication with them when they go.
Okay.
It's just not into certain piece, and I, I can't tell you the last time that their engine went. It's normally the ambulance or the squad.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody that we're getting, we're still not lacking in that communication, if there's an ability to relay that they kept in there.
Sure. And they'll have that, which we know is not quite as efficient as if you had the communications yourself, but we're hoping that this committee that, that we're on now will, will find a way somehow or another to, to build on this, if that makes sense, would build on this. And the tech, they, for sure, I talked to the salesman, and the technology, you know, the radio system we have now, they told us was going to be five-year lifespan, and it's 15 years old, so we have been extremely lucky with that, if that makes sense. And the, and the companies that didn't get it this time still have optimum communications in the county with all the other units, even the, who are just talking to them on a different radio.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on this tonight?
Yep. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the request to purchase and have installed Motorola Solutions all-band radios at the cost of $105,606.11. Funds to be allocated from the general fund, non-departmental account.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any additional discussions? Shelley, could we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to go into the public hearing section now. First item on the agenda is the ordinance to add or ordain Section 30-5 of the Warren County Code to add a one-time allocation acknowledgement pay for the non-hazardous duty Warren County employees in fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Jody, good evening.
I'm short. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Similar to the resolution that was passed on the consent agenda earlier this evening, this is an ordinance amendment to, for an acknowledgement pay for our non-hazardous duty employees. This is, of course, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting impacts, we had delayed salary increases. So in order to recognize the continuously high level of service provided by employees, we've proposed that a one-time payment of acknowledgement pay be made to these eligible employees. It would be in December of this year, and it's, again, this one, particular one, is for non-hazardous duty employees. The other criteria is that they have to be active employees, have been employed for a minimum of 90 days, and be in an active pay status at the time that the payment is made. So in other words, we won't go back and pay someone who left three months ago. They would have to have been employed by September 1st, and the amount proposed for full-time employees is $1,000 for each employee and $500 for part-time employees. The criteria for part-time is that they had to have worked a minimum of 375 hours between March 1st and November 30th. The Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1508, requires that any bonus payment made to employees has to be done by ordinance. This has been advertised. The cost comes, or the, the cost is estimated at $181,000 for this piece. It is from funds that come from the non-departmental line item that is savings that's been set aside, and so no additional funding is required in the FY 2021 budget. And I'm certainly able to answer any questions, or I'll do my best.
Now, these are, these are people that we're, that are non-hazardous duty people.
Correct.
Our average people that are working their butt off to make sure that we're getting things done, but yet they're not on the front lines.
Right. The hazardous duty is defined, we define those by the IRS standards, which are our law enforcement and fire and rescue. So those are employees that are eligible for that Leo supplement. That funding was actually available through CARES Act. CARES Act funding is not available for a regular employee. So this is, yes, basically everyone else from, and we certainly have everyone else who, some of them are on the front lines as well, our custodial staff, who are out there coming in behind and treating and pre-treating, and our treasurer staff who, you know, even though we closed to the public for a relatively short time, people were still working and still taking care of the public, still seeing people by appointments, staff at the courthouse, they never closed. So it's to cover all of those employees who are not otherwise covered by the hazardous duty portion through the CARES Act.
So it's really just a special thank you-
Yes, sir.
-for those people that are doing their jobs-
Yes, sir.
-every day.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This public hearing is now open. Shelley, has anyone signed up?
Mr. Chairman, no one's signed up.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, final call. This public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the amendment to the Warren County Code, Section 30, officers and employees to add Section 30-5, payment of a one-time acknowledgement in FY 2020, 2021, to be adopted.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Could we get a roll call, please, Shelley?
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is an ordinance to add and ordain Section 30-6 of the Warren County Code to add a one-time bonus for compensation board-funded sheriff and sheriff's deputies in fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Mrs. Shafel, you're up again.
I'm here again. This is basically another procedural matter that has to be done by ordinance. Late in October, we learned that the Virginia Legislature, through a special session, had approved funding for a one-time bonus for the sheriff and sheriff's deputies who are funded by the compensation board. So those sworn employees of the sheriff's office who have partial funding from the compensation board. So it's a one-time bonus, it's mandated. Again, all bonuses by Virginia Code require the, have to be done by ordinance, so there has to be a public hearing. So this goes along with the other two items that you have already approved this evening. It's so that the funding comes, the 500 for those full-time employees, so 500 comes from the compensation board funding, the other 500 is covered under the resolution, resolution that you did for the CARES Act funding. So it still makes all those employees level with $1,000 for those full-time hazardous duty employees, but we have to account from the separate funding pieces that it comes from. Same criteria as the other two items that we already approved this evening. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Ms. Shafel, will you explain to the community what the compensation board is? Because I had no idea-
Okay, sure. Sure. So the compensation board says for each locality in Virginia, what the funding recommendation, what the staffing level recommendation is. It is a minimum amount. It requires that salaries be maintained at a, at a certain level. So we have 34 sheriff's deputies, and that includes the sheriff, who are, now, those are sworn officers who are funded partially by the comp board, because we do supplement those salaries above and beyond, I can't tell you what that exact number is. It's, it's based on different categories, but it is typically low, because it covers the entire state. There are also other employees that are funded by the comp board in the sheriff's office, such as clerical positions and dispatchers or communications officers. Those are not part of this $500 bonus because they're not considered hazardous duty positions. So the compensation board not only covers sheriff's office, it's all of the elected, the constitutional offices. So they mandate funding for the treasurer's office, the commissioner's, commissioner revenue's office, circuit court clerk's office, and communist attorney. Mr. Ham, am I missing anything with that?
You're great.
Okay, all right. Happy to answer any questions, other questions.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The public hearing is now open. Shelley, has anyone asked to sign up?
No one has signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this topic? Final call. This public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that the amendment to the Warren County Code, Section 30, officers and employees to add Section 30-6, payment of a one-time bonus for compensation board-funded sheriff and sheriff's deputies, and FY 2020, 2021 be adopted.
I'll second it.
Any additional questions or concerns? Could we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Item number three, the renew and renewal of the Rockland, South River, and Limepton agricultural and forestal districts. Mrs. Logan?
The Rockland, South River, and Limepton agricultural and forestal districts are up for renewal by the end of this year. The county must decide whether each district should be renewed or terminated, whether they should be expanded or reduced in size, and whether the conditions applicable to the district should be changed. We, the county currently has three agricultural and forestal districts. All of the current members of the districts were notified about this review. We also notified all adjacent owners of the districts and asked if any other property owners would like to join. We did get several applications, which are in your packets, along with maps of each district showing the lots that have been added. We have spoken to many citizens and provided them with information from our department. The Planning Commission and the Agricultural and Forestal District Committee held a joint public meeting on October 14th to obtain input from residents. The meeting was very well attended, and at that meeting, additional applications were submitted from property owners. And the Planning Commission and the Agricultural and Forestal District Committee, which Ms. Coler is the board of supervisors' representative, voted to approve the new properties to be added, and they also voted to recommend the extension of all three districts for a time period of 10 years. You have all of the current ordinances as proposed and maps of the district. We did send out notice to the property, to all the property owners, but I want to make, I wanted to make sure we gave ample time, because they just got, the notices just went out last week. So I would appreciate if you could just recess this public hearing and then finish it up on the 8th. I did notify them of both dates, and actually just received another application this week in our office, so people are still being at it. So that gives just a little additional time, too. We only do this once every 10 years, so I like to give people as much time as we can. It is very important to, to the district members, the districts in their area. We currently have, Rockland District has 9,800 acres in the district, the South River District has 1,552 acres, and Limepton has 805 acres. And basically, it is, and there are ordinances for each of the districts, but I always think of it as, it's kind of a statement for that community to say they would, they would like their area to remain rural and as it is. And if, if there were any large, if there were any rezoning requests for that area, the board of supervisors would have to take into account that the districts exist there. That's just an example, and there's, there's other benefits to the district as well. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Logan.
I have a question, Taryn.
Oh, sorry.
The purpose of the agricultural and forestal districts is listed here, is there a way that we monitor that? Or, I mean, is, does somebody go there and say, are these folks actually using their property for food and-
So it's voluntary, so it's voluntary to be in the district. Most of the, most of the people in the district are in land use taxation for their property. You don't have to have a certain, to be in the district, your property doesn't have to be a certain size. There are certain requirements to be in the district, such as the, the core of the district has to be at least 200 acres, and you have to be within a mile of that. And there are, the ordinance was put together by the property owners that are in the district. So there are certain conditional use permits that they said only the members in the district, you know, we can only apply for these certain things. So it's really a community effort, and it's voluntary, and the community has put together the ordinance, and the state code allows that, and then they allow for certain, there's, at the planning commission level, I actually did a PowerPoint, I didn't do that here just because I thought, I didn't want to be, I didn't know if you want to be here all night, but it took a little while at the planning commission level. But I'd be happy to do that at the, at the morning meeting, if you like, but, or I can just include a copy of the PowerPoint in, in the presentation. But you also have the facts, the frequently asked questions list, which kind of gets a little confusing when you go through all the state code language, but there are, there are certain other benefits to being in the district. But I think the main one is just the statement, kind of that they want their area to remain rural and like it is, so.
So does this designation would prevent anybody from creating a subdivision, or subdividing and creating-
So in the Limepton-
-a housing development?
In the Limepton District, they actually decided they didn't want their lots subdivided in less than 20-acre parcels. So they did put a certain restriction in the Limepton District, unless it's for a family member. But you could do what you can subdivide by right in the agricultural and district, but if somebody wanted to come in and rezone to higher density, and they, and this district exists, the board of supervisors has to take into account that this district, so it's another hurdle, basically, that that, that developer would have to go through to, to do a higher-density development in this area. So I mean, it really is to keep this area of the county more rural and agricultural in nature.
Okay.
And the Rockland District, actually, on top of the agricultural and forestal district, they have a lot of conservation easements as well, which is permanent, but the district actually gives you points towards that conservation easement program as well. So it's another benefit of being able to get your land, you know, in the conservation easement, the permanent easement, by having the property in this as well. So there are, I'll, I'll put a copy of my PowerPoint in the, in your packet, so you have it, but if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer it. But it is voluntary among the community members and the property owners in that community, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
So if I understand you, but moving this to December 8th, we don't need to go into public hearing, we're, or do we still need-
Well, I put the motion as to, just to recess the public hearing until December 8th, so it would continue, so then if anyone did want to come out and speak at that meeting, they could as well, and I'm assuming that language is okay with the attorney, but.
Yeah, I think to answer your question, that we're expecting to have a public hearing tonight and on the 8th of December.
That was my question, I didn't know when to make that.
Well, I was going to say, if somebody's here tonight to speak on it, then we need to-
Absolutely.
That's right. And we had, we had a great turnout at the planning commission meeting, so I'm not sure if anybody, but I wanted to give the opportunity to anybody to come speak, you know, tonight or then next meeting as well.
There are no more questions? Thank you, Ms. Logan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The public hearing is now open. Shelley, has anyone signed up?
No one's signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk on this topic? Hearing none, final call. This public hearing is now closed.
No, it's recessed.
It's, well, it's recessed until October, I mean, December 8th.
Yeah.
And-
You're going to entertain that motion.
Say that again?
There is a motion to recess the public hearing in the, a suggested motion that-
Okay.
I'll move that the board of supervisors recess the public hearing until the December 8th board of supervisors meeting to allow additional notification time for all current members of the district and the new proposed members.
Second.
Any additional questions, concerns? Roll call, please, Shelley.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Any problem with putting it on December 8th?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll take care of that when she gets back.
Item number four is the conditional use permit 2020-09-01, Kevin and Renee Rogue, is that, I hope I said that correct, and Daniel and Samantha Nobles, for short-term tourist rentals. Mr. Whedling? Mr. Whedling?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This property was recently purchased jointly by the applicants who brought, bought the property as a second home for use part-time between them. They are requesting this permit in order to offset some of those costs to the mortgage and insurance and maintenance. In their statement of justification, they do say they are experienced landlords in both short and long-term tourist rentals, and understand the rental management for this type of use. This property is located on Panhandle Road, which is a state road, and has direct, and this property has direct access to it. It is not in a POA or HOA. It is, abuts the George Washington National Forest to the south. This property has not had any previous conditional use permits for agricultural zoning or previous zoning violations. The Health Department has submitted comments relating to this application, and they state that there shall be an occupancy of no more than six occupants for the three-bedroom dwelling for the septic system, which was approved for 450 gallons per day design flow. As I stated before, this property is not located within a subdivision and is accessed by a state road. This short-term tourist dwelling itself meets the setback requirements to the closest adjacent single-family dwelling. That would be 100-foot setback requirement, and the closest home is 948 feet to the west. During the public hearing at the Planning Commission level, well, prior to this, I'll just mention, well, there were concerns that were brought up regarding a bridge crossing that is a part of the driveway that serves the property. The applicants allowed Chief Maybe and Fire Marshal Miattica on the property on Monday to do an assessment of the bridge. We've received their comments, and they state that they felt that this crossing is adequate to support fire apparatus access road as required. I did send this to Ms. Emily and with photos that they took. The Planning Commission, during the public hearing, we did have approximately seven property owners come out speaking against the application. Their concerns were fireworks, hunting, litter and trash on the road, drinking and driving, potential road maintenance, which I guess the neighbors sometimes would do, but it's, it is a state road, and response time for emergency rescue vehicles, and then noise, public safety for children, and increased traffic road safety issues. The board, and I forwarded these to you, we received a letter from a neighbor that's approximately a mile away as the crow flies, requesting denial. The other property owner that sent a letter is across the street. They have a 38-acre vacant lot, and then the neighbor who has a vacant lot, she and her daughter both submitted letters requesting denial, which were provided in your packets and to you. The Planning Commission really worked hard at vetting these concerns and addressing them. Mr. Myers, our Commission Chairman, typically states that with short-term tourist rentals, you basically, it's part-time residence, you don't have the impact that you may have with a full-time resident on the roads or on the house or on, you know, ingress and egress to the property. So, and because it was a state road, typically, the state, state is charged with maintaining that road, not, not a POA. They felt that there should be some additional conditions, which I will read in a moment, relating to the firearm, shooting of firearms and hunting, discharge of fireworks, and because of its proximity to the National Forest, the banning of open outdoor fires, bonfires, and such for the guests. I will also mention that in the past, and there were concerns about people driving on this road and their, their behavior about driving on the road. We do have three short-term tourist rentals in the River Oaks subdivision just beyond this property. They were approved a few years back. One is currently inactive, two of them are active. And then also, down at the very end of Panhandle is the Low Water Bridge Campground, which, which brings people in, tourists in, to the community, and they utilize that, you know, also as a launch site for canoes. So there is that additional traffic that you see coming into the community, you know, to utilize those approved uses. If the board is to approve this, the Planning Commission has requested, and staff have forwarded this request to them with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements, and the maximum number of occupants shall not exceed six as determined according to the department's operational permit for a three-bedroom dwelling. Number two, the applicant shall provide documentation to the county staff for the maintenance of the sewage treatment system as recommended by Warren County Health Department. Number three, the applicant shall have the well water tested annually for E. coli and Alkali form bacteria, and a copy of the results shall be submitted to the Planning and Health Departments by the end of the calendar year. Number four, the shooting of firearms and hunting shall be prohibited. Number five, there shall be no discharging of fireworks. And number six, there shall be no open outdoor fires, bonfires, or fire pits used by guests. This public hearing has been properly advertised, adjacent property owners have been notified. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. The applicants are also here, if you would like to ask them any questions prior to the public hearing.
Would the applicants carry to come forward and talk?
Okay, take it down. Hi, good evening. My name is Renee Royg, and I want to start by thanking you guys for the opportunity to be here tonight for the consideration of our conditional use permit at our home at 2686 Panhandle Road. I also want to acknowledge my husband, Kevin, and our fellow homeowner, Samantha and Daniel Nobles. My husband and our two young children, as well as the Nobleses and their growing family, decided to purchase our property after years of traveling and renting places in this area. Our families are best friends, and we wanted to find a place of our own within short driving distance of DC. We love our house on Panhandle Road and are so proud to be a part of the Front Royal community. The summer during the pandemic, we lived here full-time as we updated the house and made it our own. The extended time in Front Royal reinforced that we picked the right place to be. Our affection for this area continues to grow, and our house is a wonderful escape from city life. We intend to confirm to the Board of Supervisors that we and our home on Panhandle Road are ideal candidates for the conditional use permit, as the planning condition unanimously approved. We've appreciated hearing from our neighbors during this process and would like to recap some of the concerns that they had and what we plan to do to address those. First, well, I would like to add that we will be neighbors for the long term, irrespective of what happens tonight. We are committed to maintaining the safe, healthy, and peaceful community and the natural beauty of the environment of all the, which is the primary concern for all of us homeowners on Panhandle Road. So first trespassing. Our property lines will be clearly marked. As Matt mentioned, our property has lines with State Highway 613, the George Washington National Forest, and two private property abutments. At our first meeting, Mr. Henry noted that our property was ideal due to the proximity to the nearest homestead, which was 948 feet away, which is nine times the requirement for this application. Our area has so many publicly accessible attractions, like Andy Guest State Park, Skyline Drive, Downtown Front Royal, and the list goes on. We're confident that anyone that would want to come and visit and use our home would use it for the reasons that we would want to use it, be attracted to the home, are over four and a half acres, and would not have an interest in trespassing on private property. Second, traffic. It was noted in the last meeting that studies show that traffic, and as Matt mentioned, is less due to short-term rental, more than, than it would if it was a full-time occupancy. We're happy to recommend for people to adhere to speed limit or go even slower if they don't know the roads, and we'll also provide tow truck information in the unlikely event someone needs it. For firearms, where it's going to be prohibited as per the conditions of this permit, parties was an issue that was brought up. It will be clear to prospective renters that this is not a party venue. This is our second home, and we want renters and our guests to be people who respect our home for what we made it to be and enjoy a quiet respite from the city in a family-friendly environment. It was brought up for our septic system, and we have provided the inspections and are happy to adhere to the conditions on the permit. Additionally, like Matt mentioned, there was a concern about our, a bridge over, on our driveway over a creek, and thankfully, the Warren County Fire Marshal came out yesterday to inspect the bridge and found it to be sound, and I believe you guys have that documentation. So the more that we thought about it, there is an issue that we would like the board to address, which is that we would ask that you strike or amend the condition placed on our application on the open burning and fire pit. Warren County Code has spoken to the issue of open outdoor fires, and the condition being placed on our application seems to be out of, out of the scope of, of this. We're not in a highly populated area, nor are we in an HOA. In my conversation with the Fire Marshal yesterday, he noted that he believes for short-term renters to be safer in terms of fire safety, just because they're used less. If I understand correctly, a guest of ours could step onto the National Forest and burn a fire there as a dispersed camper. We have a fire pit that existed on the property before we bought it and that we use for our personal use, and just believe it's an undue burden to ask people not to use it, and would actually just be safer to use it in the confines of the fire pit ring. If you have any questions or want to discuss that more, we'd be happy to engage in that discussion. So thank you again for the opportunity to move forward in this process. I don't know if any of you saw the Discover Front Royal video that was put out by the Front Royal Visitors Bureau, but we did, and we're really excited about what's happening in Warren County and Front Royal. We are here because we're already invested in this community as private property owners. We want to continue enjoying and exploring the natural beauty that Warren County is blessed with, and we want the opportunity and the option to invite others to enjoy Front Royal too. Thank you. Do you want to sit down or do you have questions?
Do we have questions? I know I've got one or two, but.
I have one.
Okay.
What, how, how are you marketing the house and what, like, websites are you using? Are you doing Airbnb, are you doing?
So ideally, so we live in DC, we have lived there for over six, or six years, and Nobleses have lived there longer. We actually would prefer not to use sites like that. Our community and word of mouth, just from the people that we know that are itching to get out of the city because of the conditions, we'd actually prefer that model over using any sort of platform like that.
So you're not going to market it online at all to people that you don't know?
I am not saying that, I'm saying we prefer that model. I, I don't want, I think we would prefer not to have to deal with people that we, no, I'm sorry, not deal, interact with people that we don't necessarily know or have a contact with, and because we have a wide circle in Washington DC, that's our preference, is just to have people within our circles.
If you are renting to people and you're in Washington DC, how are you going to easily get here to fix any problem that they have? Do you have a project manager, or do you have a property manager that's actually taking care of those things for you? Or what's the plan?
So in our document, we haven't provided that. Ideally, we would like to be responsive to those and drive and come. We would hope to identify a partner that's potentially like a cleaning partner that we could lean on, but we have found the drive to be an hour and a half and are all fairly handy and would like to be responsive to those, if that's permissible.
I have a question too, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The parking, I'm familiar with the road, and your guests, were they not parked in the road or close on the side of the road? Do you have parking facilities on your lot that will take care of any parking that's not?
Correct. It's a very long driveway that has probably about six easily accessible parking spots.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything from anybody else?
And we're happy to come forward and address anything else if it's brought up this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So does the board have any other questions for the staff?
I may have one later, but I'm assuming there's people that are going to speak, so I'd like to wait and hear what they have to say and then decide.
Yes. The public hearing is now open. Shelley, has anyone signed up?
Yes.
I have, first I have Daniel and Samantha Nobles. Did either one of you want to speak?
Yeah.
The next one would be Becky Donlin? Okay.
Has anyone else signed up?
Dawn Simmons?
Good evening.
Good evening.
One of our main concerns is the state of the roadway. It's not a regular two-lane road that people from DC will be, that are used to riding on. It narrows from a one and a half lane to a one-lane road in some areas. There're blind curves, there're massive puddles, there's washboarding, and there's humps. I slow down to 10 miles an hour in some of these areas, and I travel every day on these. I'm encouraging travel out there to people who are unfamiliar with these rustic ways of traveling on the road. You pull off to the side, wait for somebody to come past, because you know you can't fit. That's putting everyone's safety at risk. Seeing there are restrictions and policing enforcing them are two different things, which are concerning for our families. Our community is educated in practices that promotes safety from such things as bear, coyote, fires. And we pass this knowledge on to the new people that come to town, our new neighbors. We pass it on freely. It's one thing to impart these practices once a year or so as new people come in and long-term residents join us, and it's another thing having to deal with the consequences of the weak enders' ignorances. My safety and my animal's safety is at risk. It's been said that having unlimited groups of strangers descend upon our community shouldn't be a concern. It is. Dealing with one bad neighbor for long-term is preferable than having the possibility of hundreds of different individuals whom you have no idea of what their intent or character. It's as they say, the devil you know. Some concerns, if they have hunters using the property, these people won't be familiar with the property lines, or my pets, or my livestock in the surrounding areas, which way to shoot, you know, whose house is over here. Again, the campfires or the bonfire parties with these getting out of control. Screening of the guests, what will there be? Lack of accountability for Airbnb renters. Who do we call if there's a problem? What kind of response time is there? Does it all, all this enforcement fall to the Sheriff Department? My opinion, the property was purchased purely as a business venture. The application for this permit being applied for within six weeks, I think, of closing demonstrates this. They're merely adding another property to their list of houses that they currently have running as Airbnbs. This area is purely residential community. and their neighbors. Thank you.
Shelley, do we have anyone else that's signed up?
Wendy Weir?
How are you? Wendy Weir, 2436 Panhandle Road. I have another letter of opposition that I had given to Mr. Wendling at the October 14 meeting from two residents on Panhandle Road, Robbie and Lisa Greenbacker. I have that here if you want to add that to your packet. Also Becky Duncan is on Panhandle Road here to express her opposition. I'm not sure where exactly to start. I had a plan. The fact that they're wanting to strike open air burning from the recommendation troubles me deeply. My property directly adjoins this property. It's, it is wooded. My feeling is with homeowners, me in particular, I built the campfire, very responsible in making sure it's out before I leave it. If you have weekend transient strangers and they're out there partying and, you know, they drink too much, or they get going on whatever they're doing, they walk away, they think it's out, the wind comes through, you know how the wind blows through that ravine and it blows embers into the national forest? Yes, it's right there, so is my property. So I take great issue with the open air burning. I wasn't going to bring this up, but Ms. Roy did, so when she applied for, when they applied for the conditional use permit, it's, she had told me, she called to tell me that she was just going to rent it out to friends and family because they saw how much fun they were having, they wanted to come in. At the public hearing, she said friends, family, and anyone else that's interested. She had told me she was going to use the platform VRBO. Now they're saying something different. When I sold them the property, before I sold it, I told them that I was looking for, I had some say over who I sold it to. I said, "I'm looking for a young couple to raise their family as I did. I will not sell to anybody that's going to start an Airbnb." They said they were not going to do that. They were going to buy it for themselves jointly to get away from Washington DC. Six weeks later, they're pulling a permit. I did write you a letter. I'm not sure you were able to read it, so I'll touch on some of the highlights. Their current plan to manage the Airbnb from Washington DC, they say they're an hour away. We all know what it's like living in Warren County. If there is a problem, they're an hour away. If I have somebody on my property or threatening me, or there's a party, or they're burning, or, you know, what, the whole list of things that can go wrong with weekenders. I'm responsible for calling them and them driving an hour and a half to take care of it. Often, there's trees down now on Panhandle Road. The wind was blowing this morning, there's a tree down on Panhandle Road. How are they going to address that? The driveway is lined with pine trees. How are they going to address that? These people are stranded out in the middle of nowhere. Where are they going to go? They're going to go to the neighbors. There is no cellphone service out there. Very little AT&amp;T, very little Sprint, and that depends on how much foliage is on the trees, how fast the wind's blowing, a whole thing. I had CenturyLink landline with internet, so I would use my wifi calling on my phone. Sometimes that worked, sometimes it didn't. The power goes out a lot on Panhandle Road. It was out all day Sunday. You're dead in the water. Where are they going to go? They're going to go to the neighbors. There's no cellphone. The power, when the wind blows, we lose power. Happens all the time. Trespassing, I have two beautiful trails that go from that property to my property and to Dan Weir's property, 2436. They're very attractive. Trespassing signs, even the tape that I've got up now is not going to stop somebody who's there for a weekend but is going to be leaving tomorrow from walking the trail and seeing what's up there. Even when I had the house and I was selling it, I had posted signs all over the front entrance. People still drive in there and look around. People do what they want to do. They don't care. Hunting, they say they don't want firearms on their property, they're not going to allow hunting. Property's 10 feet from the national forest. They can't tell somebody they can't go out there and hunt. So now, this Airbnb, for lack of a better word, is enticing hunters, so now it's convergence into a hunting cabin, and we've got hunters in the woods shooting at everything. And we're right there, they don't know where they're at. You get lost in the woods, and you can't determine really where my property is from the national forest. So they can't tell people they can't hunt in the national forest. They can't do it. I agree with Dawn about the long-term renters. I think it was Mr. Henry said, you know, short-term renters, you get a bad group, it's a weekend. Long-term, you got to deal with them for 30 days or more. I don't care. If they continually break the rules or are noncompliant and they're there for 30 days, then the law enforcement will take care of that. They have to come out repeated times, they'll fix that. I got to deal with a different group every weekend? It's a very dusty gravel road. When I decided to downsize and build on my property, I did not envision a thoroughfare of transient traffic. Yes, Down River Canoe Company, Low Water Bridge is at the opposite end of Panhandle. They go up 340, they come in 613 that way. They do not have to travel down six miles down Panhandle Road. They go the hard, the pavement. As far as the three Airbnb, the three Airbnbs, Airbnbs in River Oak, I will tell you, I was coming home 10:30 Sunday morning and passed five vehicles full of people. Four tags were Maryland, one was DC, coming from that way. We that live on Panhandle Road, we need that road to travel. The unnecessary travel from transients is tearing up the roads. The repairs are far and few between, and we have to deal with it. When they leave, we're stuck with the washboard, the potholes, the moguls, the huge ditches. There's places that you cannot pull over. So you've got five people from out of state coming up the road. I've got nowhere to go because I've got an 18-foot ditch on the right-hand side. I've got nowhere to go. It's happened before. I popped a tire right there, and my husband had to come get me on a tractor. There's nowhere, sometimes places, there's just nowhere to pull over. Traffic congestion, yeah, creates traffic congestion when everybody's pulling over on the side of the road to let us by. All that being said about the other Airbnbs, Panhandle Road is extremely rural, and all this tourism, I hate to say it like this, but being forced on us. Nobody's aware it's happening, a little sign at the end of the driveway, the neighbors don't know, nobody knows, the county doesn't know it's happening, and it's primitive out there. We've got the one-lane road, one-and-a-half-lane road. Barely do we have internet, cellphone, power goes out, and we're promoting all this tourism. These folks, you know, you come in from out of state, seize an opportunity, take a house from a family that has an opportunity to raise their children in a wholesome place, free, safe from the city, and they're taking advantage of that and turning it into a business. It's not fair. It's not fair to us that have to deal with the ramifications. They're not there to monitor no firearms, no parties, no this, no that. They're not there to monitor. It's up to us. We have to monitor it. We have to deal with folks coming on our property. We have to call the police if they come. They know it's a tourist rental, they'll be gone Sunday, we're not going out there. So, I don't know, I've never, I've not been this upset in a long time. I was hoping to take a break before I built on that property, but even that, I don't want to build on it if this is going on. I, I don't want to be subject to random strangers every weekend coming from who knows where. They're not even doing background checks. They're not going to limit it to friends and family.
Mrs. Weir, we're, I believe that we're understanding your passion. If we have something else to add?
Well, I can, I can wrap it up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Shelley, do we have anyone else that's signed up?
Chuck, excuse me, Chuck Eschelman?
How you all doing? All right. I live about a half a mile east of this property, and so I'm just going to kind of read this, keep my thoughts together.
Chuck, I hate to interrupt, but could you give your address to...
Yes, yes. 2996 Panhandle Road, okay, about a half mile east of this property.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to begin by saying one of the many reasons that we live there is because it is rural, and we've enjoyed the permanent neighbors. We come to know permanent meaning, those who have lived there all the time as residents. As neighbors, we watch out for each other, we help each other, and we've even shared and raised our families together. I've been living there 67 years ago, old, I've only been gone about five years, so... But my, my feelings are this, people coming here to make an investment for themselves, such as an Airbnb, and I know they say, she said, they're not going to maybe market that, but saying they may not doesn't mean they won't, unless there's some restriction. I don't see why they wouldn't, once they get the application approved, unless it's some kind of restriction, they can market any way they want. But that's not investing their lives into the neighborhood community, and that's kind of why we all live there, and have lived there all our lives. But instead, they're bringing in a rotating clientele of strangers to us, and while they live 100 miles away, which is one of my concerns. I am very sympathetic to the neighbors who live closest to them about their security and their privacy, which they've enjoyed, and I know they want to continue to enjoy that, and I don't blame them. My experience with many who come to our area from the urban area, the general attitude is who is going to care way out here? And, and they're generally not concerned about the local residents. Living where I live, it's on the river, I'm always dealing with people trespassing. The general attitudes, like I said, is we're way out here, who's going to care? A good example of that is you go down by Buzzard's Point or Buzzard Rock Trail and just see where everybody parks out on the road. Even after being towed, weekend after weekend after weekend, they still do it, and they just don't care. And it's just a general attitude. I'm not, I can't say everybody's going to be like that, I don't mean that. For me personally, I perceive many coming out here who will not be used to the road conditions on this dirt gravel road, especially in winter. Where I live, on the way to this house, in front of my house is a steep hill, which drops down into a creek, which makes a sharp right-hand turn, which banks sharply, it's a right-hand turn, which banks sharply steep to the right, and then you have a long grade to go up, which is shaded and it doesn't melt. When we get an unexpected freezing rain, or an unexpected dusting of snow or deep snow, vehicles become a sled coming down that hill. Every winter, I rescue people off this hill. Many come and can't get up the hill, and I notice a lot of them live further up the road, they can't get up that hill, so they turn around, and I'm sure they go around the bit and will come in the other way, because they have recently upgraded that road a lot. But I've gone down many times and rescued many people there off that. I've had people not make the turn, end up down in the creek and into my yard, knock the mailbox out, my neighbor's mailbox out down there. And I've allowed many times, my neighbors who have been longtime residents there, just, I don't think it asks, can I park in your driveway because they can't get up this hill? And they walk back to their homes, and sometimes that goes on for days. Yes, it is a state road, but it is not, it is sometimes three and four days before this road gets cleared, and if you've got rotating people coming out to stay, I don't care whether they're family or not, they still end up in the situation. But my thought is, is that when I read the information about this, they're going to have a cleaning management company as a emergency contact. Well, what good does that do? And what are they going to do when people are stuck up on the road, stuck in the road, snowed in, powers out, whatever? Primarily for me, it's the ones coming out or going up this piece of road to get there. The ones who end up dealing with this is people like myself. The neighbors deal with it. Because I've worked in DC for 29 years, and I know you can't be here in an hour in winter weather. You're lucky to get here in four hours, if you come yourself. What I'm getting at is, is that I don't think they've thought this through as far, and I'm speaking primarily wintertime here, is how they're going to handle these problems. And along with the rotating clientele, who are not familiar with the road conditions, and won't be on an ongoing basis. The permanent landowners, people who live there all the time, they know the road conditions. And we know each other, and we count on each other, and we've helped each other, and that's one thing. But, you know, it should not be incumbent upon the neighbors to be the ones rescuing a rotating clientele coming out here in this situation, as far as I'm concerned. I have stayed in a remote Airbnb before, went to visit Germany. We were very remote, but everybody there was an onsite Airbnb or onsite renter, where they, they were there to help deal with all the problems. to help deal with all the problems. And this is one of my biggest concerns, is them being, yes, they are acquainted with renting places, but as far as renting something in this kind of a place, under these conditions, I don't see it. How can you deal with the problems a hundred, a hundred and twenty miles away, under these conditions, in this kind of situation, for this place to be used as an Airbnb or a rental? And I want to say this, I hope you notice that the majority of the neighbors have shown up and have shown their disfavor to this, for I think legitimate reasons, and I hope you all consider that, so, thank you all.
Shelley, anyone else signed up?
Good evening. My name is Rudy Waltner, I reside at twenty-seven seventy-seven Panhandle Road. My house is approximately nine hundred and seventy feet from the applicant structure, so I'm like the second closest dwelling. The reason my wife and I originally bought property out there was privacy, seclusion, and being close to nature and so forth, getting away from the crowded life in Woodbridge. And that allows us to keep the windows and blinds and curtains open, because we have property around us that we own, where nobody should be, and we can enjoy nature from inside by being able to look out, not, you know, shuttered in, like you have to in the city. So that was one of the primary reasons why we bought property out there. So, you know, I would first like to concur with my neighbors, you know, their sentiments that they've expressed, and just add a few more points on top of that. As far as the trespassing, that is a major concern of mine. First, let me make something clear, their property, although it joins some George Washington National Forest, it only joins a very small portion that is located between Panhandle Road and the river, it does not join the primary portion of the GW Forest on the mountain. Okay, so several of our properties are between Panhandle Road, the subject property, and the GW Forest. Okay, so theirs does not have direct access to the primary portion. Okay, so my property is clearly marked, I use state-approved methods of yellow signs and purple paint, but whether transients know what purple paint means is beyond me. Okay, but that is a state-approved method of marking property. Noise, that location is down the hollow between the mountain and a big hill, so noise does carry, and over the past couple of weeks, I have heard music coming from that property. I know it's them right now, but in the future, it's going to be the renters. So, when it comes down to the place, if the place is being rented, I will be calling the sheriff's office, so it is documented, so when this permit comes up for renewal, we have the documentation. But should the board decide to grant this conditional use permit, I'd like to see a couple of other conditions placed on it. One concerning the road. Neighbors have mentioned the road, and to be clear, it's not the volume, it's the driving capability of the strangers on the road. So I would like it to be listed in any postings that they have, that the road is an unpaved gravel, narrow, and often in poor condition, and to please drive with caution and respect oncoming traffic. And that should also be included in any welcome package that may be distributed to the renters. As far as trespassing, okay, there's always going to be the chance, people don't care, but to help mitigate that a little bit, I would like to see a large map posted inside the residence, of all properties within a half a mile, with each property clearly marked as private or public GW Forest. And a copy of that map should also be included in a welcome package given to the guest. And one for the times with COVID. During the COVID, current COVID emergency, I feel the property should be professionally cleaned and sanitized after each tenant, not just a cleaning company who does a dust vacuum and sweep. Okay? And those are just the points I'd like to bring up tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shelley, is anyone else signed up?
How are you? Stephen Aaron, eleven seventy-four River Ridge Road. I am here because I went through the CUP process with y'all last year. I purchased property out here in Warren County, and invested and renovated the property, and then filed for a CUP, and for a short-term rental, and got it approved. As part of that process, the Roygs and the Nobles were friends of ours, so they came out and visited us on the property and said, man, isn't this great? And said, we all should do it too. And they did. And that's how it's supposed to work. That's how you get people to come to Warren County and invest, and renovate homes, and spend money, and increase the economy. I don't think I have to make the argument to y'all what Corona has done to state, county, and local budgets, but this is a property that is not in an HOA or POA, doesn't have any restrictions on it, meets all the county requirements. And what's the message you're going to send if you deny a permit because of not in my backyard concerns? It meets every requirement of the code of Warren County, which you're going to tell people like me, and now the Nobles, you shouldn't invest in Warren County, because they're not going to approve permits. That's probably not the message I would think you want to send. So I'm not really here as an advocate, I just tell a story that people come to Warren County to invest in it because it's a great place, and I'd like to see it continue to be a great place. I'd like to continue to, I actually actively have more friends looking at property in Warren County right now, that I hope they can buy, and I hope they can get a permit, and I hope that, I hope that they can continue to help Warren County expand their base and raise home values. So, that's all I've really got to say, but y'all know, I've heard all the concerns of the neighbors, and y'all deal with these permits all the time, y'all know which of those concerns are valid and which of them are not, you've, you've heard from the other permits, which ones have had problems and which ones not, and how often it happens. So, all I really wanted to say is, this is how it's supposed to work, that people come to Warren County and bring other people out here and show them how great it is, and they come out here and invest too, and I hope y'all continue that process.
Shelley, do we have anyone else?
No one else signed up.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
John Leacy, two eight one five Panhandle Road. I'm just one house away from this. I just moved there with my family, I have seven children that I'm concerned about. You know, I have seen how people drive on that road that don't, you know, the people I don't recognize, people that I don't recognize. They go very fast if they're unfamiliar with it, so that's a danger, I think, someone's going to get hurt, run over, hit, whatever. The other thing is, I just wanted to let you know, and I agree with all these concerns, there's not one concern that I don't agree with, that everyone's brought before you today against this. The other thing I'd like to say is, I moved there in August, I would have never moved my children there, had I known that this was going to be a problem. So, I hope you do take that into consideration. Again, I have seven, seven very young children, and I'm concerned that I'm not going to know who my neighbors are. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Chelsea Hackney, I reside at thirty-four fifty-five Panhandle Road, and I would like to just say that I agree with all of my neighbors and what they've had to say. I also brought up at the last meeting that Panhandle Road is also a very multi-generational road where a lot of families have grown up. My best friend is seventy-one years old, and he's lived his entire life on that road. And people do, they go out there for the quiet, they go out there for, because it backs right up to the park, and they can enjoy their hunting, and they know the laws, and I also own a river lot on Pala Drive, which is right off of Sager, off of Panhandle, and I just have to say, over the past summer, I've seen so many people walking down this private road, like Ozap Blatchen Trail, and that's, I live down there alone sometimes during the summer in a camper, and it doesn't feel safe anymore, and that's just through a rental that's not even on that road, it's a couple roads over, and people are jumping creeks, and just, they see a private dirt road, and they decide to help themselves, and it's just a little unsettling when you get that slew of strangers that come in every weekend. And I've, I've rented out Airbnbs and rental properties and stuff before too, and I, I know people don't always adhere to the rules, if they feel like they can get away with something, they, they will, so. I just wanted to voice my concerns and say that I back all of my neighbors, and say that I'm against this, this rental property, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this? Having heard none, I'm sorry?
Can I just want to say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I want to just say, the gentleman who spoke, it's a very good point, and the issue isn't about it being a good idea or a bad idea to come out here and invest. It's a good idea to come out here and invest in this county, in our neighborhood, I'm all for that. But our complaint is about this particular place, under the circumstances for this particular residence, and, and that's, it's not about us rejecting the idea of people investing into our community and our, I just want to say that, it just, he's got a valid point, and I think people need to come out here, and there's just a good place, it's a good place to live, but I just felt like it needed to be said, that we're not up against everybody coming out here from the city to, to have a place to go to. We understand that. We're just against this particular residence, under the circumstances that we've all given. That's all. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to say anything at all?
Kevin Royd, twenty-six eighty-six Panhandle. I just want to say that the scope of this conversation, I think, has, has gone beyond our capacity to respond to every one of the hypothetical things that could occur in an unknown future. And so I don't, I don't want to spend my time doing that, but I, I do want to just quickly say that, you know, we, we are not like real estate tycoons, by any stretch of the imagination. And we, our interest here is to enjoy the county, because we love it, because we've been out here a ton of times prior to buying this home, and we, we really loved the home that we bought from Ms. Weir, and we, we're going to be here either way, and it seems like the narrative that has been put forward tonight and at the previous meeting is, is not a reflection of our intent, it's not a reflection of who we are as individuals. And irrespective of the outcome of, of tonight, now we've got a ton of work to do to, to get to know our neighbors, because these two public meetings, it's actually the first time that we've seen any, any one of them, other than Ms. Weir. So, and we're going to do that. And so, you know, I think that, one thing I, one last thing I would like to say, in a, in a hypothetical alternative, there is no process through which we could apply for a conditional use permit, and we do what we wish with our private property, without anyone in the county having a say-so, up until we break the law, at which point the law gets involved, right? And so you guys have provided a means for us to apply for this conditional use permit, and, and we're doing it. And whether or not we make money doing that, or, or we don't, frankly, is, is no one else, no one else's concern, because we can afford the property, which is why the bank gave us the money to do it. We all work full-time, and we're all responsible adults, and so the, there's a lot of things being said about us as individuals that I don't appreciate, and again, I'm not going to respond to all of them, but I, I just wanted to, to make mention of, of those facts and, and say that bit, so, that's all.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Final call? This public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Could I ask a few questions? Because I, I wrote some down while I was listening. And, and most are for you to answer, so whoever would like to. Point was brought up about winter, people being there during the winter. Do you plan to rent this out in the winter, and, and how often do you see, you said you were there most of the summer, so how often do you plan in, during the winter months?
So, it's a great question, and the answer is, I don't know yet. There are a lot of things that we do not know about the property throughout the winter, because we haven't been there ourselves and experienced it, so we are going to not be aggressive about it, because as I also mentioned, we, we all have our own lives in DC and responsibilities there, and two young kids, et cetera. So, I think that we are going to, should it pan, pan out, and we are able to move forward, we would start with that model of short stays with people that we know, so that if a pipe freezes or bursts, they call us as, as friends, with a pre-established relationship, and we can, we can troubleshoot it, and doing it like that through each of the seasons, we're going to kind of be able to figure out the different things that we need to anticipate to get, to get better at it, and as we build relationships in the community, identify folks who can be that, that handy person, who could quickly come and step in on, on our behalf and help us out. But that stuff takes time, and, and we know that, and because this isn't a business venture, we don't feel any sense of pressure to get that done now, and, and try to blow off the doors of this thing, because it's, again, our second home that we want to enjoy first and foremost, and so we will be here in the winter, over the course of various weekends and other times that we have off of work, and we'll be able to experience and, and kind of learn those things ourselves, and then, to the extent that we are able to, we'll invite others to come out and rent it and do the same, and, and in that way, we'll get better at it.
Okay. My second question, are you willing to look into having a local person provide the, to be the point of contact person? Because I do agree that by the time, let's say you were at your full-time job and you got a call, by the time you would be able to address it, it's probably well past an hour, where someone may, you know, a burst pipe, or the furnace, or whatever, you know, it, it seems to me that you're putting yourself in a bad position, as well as your renters. You know, if you're going to do it by word of mouth, and you have a renter that goes and says, well, it was great until this and this happened, and we spent most of our day not being able to enjoy it because you weren't able to provide it. You can see where word of mouth is going to kind of hurt you on that.
Sure.
So it seems that that would make a better relationship with your neighbors, as well as your renters, to have more of a local person that could be your point of contact, just a thought in my mind.
And it's a good thought, and I would just reiterate that that is, that is the goal. I, I would not be a huge fan of that being a condition of our ability to move forward, because then that puts us in a tough position to get going, because we, we are doing this, to the extent that we are going to be renting this out regularly with this high-volume turn, which is, is not going to happen overnight, if it happens at all, that's going to take time, and so we, we want to be able to offer up our space that we're very proud of, and that we enjoy a lot, to our friends and to our family, absent a, a local point of contact, while we continue to, to meet people, and to, and to get to know what those options are. So, yes and no, in a way.
I got you. The, the concern of, it's in the conditional use, about prohibiting gunfire on your property, but they have a valid point of, you know, I understand I can't shoot my gun on your property if I'm renting it, but I, I can still walk across the road.
Yep.
And now realizing that they're going to have to go on somebody's property to get to the hunting area.
Yep.
Would you be objectable to that being part of this, that no one can have hunting rights as an occupant of your, to alleviate that concern?
So, I think that by saying to prospective renters that firearms are prohibited, eliminates the need for an additional restriction. People who we are going to offer this to initially, and hopefully, as, as Renee said earlier, we're not going to... not going to throw it on VRBO or Airbnb, if things go the way that we hope that they do, which is, again, utilizing mainly our spheres of influence, our friends, and concentric circles from there. I think that by saying there's no firearms eliminates, again, eliminates that risk. But I mean, again, I'm not the only homeowner here, so we're four people. I can't necessarily convince them.
Well, sometimes you have to put in a lot of details for people
Sure.
That want to read a sentence and understand it their way versus the way you wrote the sentence to be interpreted.
Sure. My wife has something to say.
I will add that. Our place is not a hunting lodge, it's not outfitted that way. I have not done any hunting, but I am aware that once you kill something, you have to bring it back and gut it, if it's your first time, you put blood on your face. That's not our property, and I think we'd be happy, and we don't desire anyone to do that at our property. I think we'd be happy to put a conditional use.
Okay.
So if you, I don't mean to interrupt, but, so if you put a statement out that says that firearms and hunting shall be prohibited, we're changing the words in one of the requirements of you getting your conditional use permit.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm fine with that. Are you guys fine with that?
Okay.
I just have a question on that. Is it that guests are not able to go to the forest and do hunting or traditionally?
Well, that's where it gets sticky because, in reality, a person could come and have a firearm in their vehicle, not have it on our property, be abiding by our rules and yours, and still go hunt in the George Washington National Forest because we don't have jurisdiction over that. And neither do you.
No, no. But if the understanding, and I could be way off legally on this, but if the understanding is that you desire your renters not to be using it as a hunting weekend.
Right. And so the question is, what is the best mechanism to communicate that desire? Is it the business and the people running it? Or is it the government? And my point is that by tacking on all these additional restrictions, we're getting into this space where we're going to tailor this permit so tightly and so uniquely that I believe it becomes a bit of a burden on us.
Well, I'm asking these as what-ifs at this point, because these are the concerns that have been told to us. I'm trying to figure where we can meet a middle ground, because this is a difficult thing for us to have to deal with. I don't want, I don't like to tell people what to do with their property. When, you know, if, I've got a home, I don't want somebody telling me, "I can't have my dog," or "I can't have this." You know, I bought my property. At the same time, you have neighbors that you have to live within, and they have valid concerns. So I'm trying to be devil's advocate here
Sure.
And try to see where we can all meet to make this the best environment for everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's why I'm asking these questions.
We would happily accept that as a solution, but it does not mitigate the risk, because a person could still do it.
I guarantee. The thing that then makes it easier is if this becomes an issue over and over, then it gives us the ability to look at this. Whereas, we don't think about it now, and you get this, we're done. So that's why I'm throwing it out here as, you know, listening to their concerns, and you're here, we're all here, it's better to air it. The question of educating the man that brought up about trespassing, because not every, you don't have to put up a sign that says, "No trespassing." So I think it would be a good idea to put, if you see a tree or a fence post that has purple marking, I think it's purple marking, it used to be silver, so there might be some silver, that that means you're not supposed to go beyond, that's trespassing. I don't know how many people from the city might realize that that purple, because you've got markings that, for the Appalachian Trails, one color, for some of the tributaries of it. I know blue is up my way for, I can't think of the name of the trail, but there's things marked with blue to tell them that that's a trail they can be on. So I think it would be a good idea to have that, just to make everybody happy and for an educational purpose.
And we will certainly have that.
And the outdoor burning. You know, to me, you know, I bought a fire pit years ago and hadn't put a stick of wood in it because I don't have time to set at it, but my hope is to be able to do that. So I understand where that's, you know, a thing that is enjoyable, but I, living in the country and knowing how dry it gets and how windy it gets, and how easy, I don't care if you're drinking or you're not drinking, it's just easy, your kids get restless and want to go to bed, and you forget about it. So, I think the fire burning makes me uncomfortable to say, "Oh, I'm not worried about it, let's take it out." And then we would have a fire, and people would lose their homes. My conscience has an issue with that.
Would you be open to any amendments that suggest, like proper extinguishment, like our providing gallon of water down by the fire pit, improper large instructions in the home, or down by the?
I would have a problem with that.
You would have a problem, or you would?
I would have a problem with just saying it. If you tell them, you're not going to stop them if they choose to.
The conditional use.
I mean, you're not going to stop them if they choose to. I just openly say that. But you can put the restriction on by saying, "I don't want a fire, I don't want a fire in the fire pit." That is not something that would be a killer of the deal. I just don't think that it would.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that, because
Okay. You have the right to disagree.
Yes, sir. Because that is a very appealing portion of coming out to Front Royal and to this property in particular. And with the work that we have put into, the previous homeowner mentioned that the fire pit has been there, and it was there, but we have actually since moved it to a more central location so that it was not so close to a nearby tree and to the creek, so that people wouldn't accidentally fall into the creek. We've expanded it. Daniel and I spent the better part of an afternoon digging it a foot into the ground, running the gravel, running the sand, not in that order, like you're supposed to, putting the ring. I mean, it is a very safe fire pit, and it is, it is cleared all around. We took down a tree that used to hang over the old fire pit, so that it's more open up top, so that flames, I mean, it is a very safe fire. I grew up in the country in Louisiana, on 10 acres of land. Like, I understand the concern about burns, I understand the concern about fires. But at some point, you've got to trust in some baseline intelligence of human beings who are, they, if they're smart enough to find us on the internet, and if they can navigate the terror that is Panhandle Road and actually get to our house, I think that they have the ability to responsibly burn a fire. And I do, I do think it's a deal breaker. I think that it is an undue burden, particularly in light of the fact that Warren County Code has spoken to this issue. And this would be an arbitrary additional burden that you're placing on us because of the opinions of a few folks whose names we don't know.
Well, I would like to add that I spoke with Matt, and I believe the condition has been used once before as a precedent, and the home that it was used on for the conditional use application was in a highly populated area. Was that a recent one?
This was probably about four or five years ago. It was up in Blue Mountain, and the property owner was in an R1 subdivision, residential one. It was a smaller lot. It was an open pit, but it was kind of pretty close to the woods. And that was a condition placed on the permit, that it would be abandoned. The property owner agreed to it and just converted it to a patio, and they have a fish pond there. I think they actually put in a fish pond or something, a little of that. But it was a concern of the adjacent property owners because it was a higher-density, higher-populated area in Blue Mountain. And I cannot speak to the specifics of this fire pit. I did observe it when I went out there and posted the property. I probably should have taken a photo. Next time, I will.
I have photos, I'm happy to share.
But in any case, we look at what could potentially be done to mitigate human behavior here. It's an absolute concern of the neighbors, I totally would get that. I don't know if there's something that they could post in the way of signage, and in the way of possibly a fire extinguisher that's readily accessible, and a fire bucket, and directions to the outdoor faucet. It's something that potentially, from the standpoint of our enforcement, if that was required, I could go and visibly see that signage, visibly check the fire extinguisher, visibly check the bucket and their location. Very similar, I think Mr. Walton brought up some excellent concerns, and these are things that, in regard to the additional conditions, you know, the COVID cleaning, you know, to be honest with you, I did not think about that. But, and the Health Department said nothing about that in their comments. You know, certainly the trespassing.
So that risk is inherent to going anywhere.
I understand, but when it's
The individual has the ability and responsibility to accept that risk if they so choose.
Right. Well, I understand that, but it's still, you know, we are in that era, so. And then, and certainly those, you know, the thoughts on either adding a condition, the applicants will be required to submit a property management plan, and we certainly can absolutely make sure that that plan has that language. It might be, a solution might be that their guests sign a form that say they have read this and understand it, and that if they do not comply, they lose their deposit and everything. Again, we're trying to mitigate human behavior, and there's human behavior involved with any land use, any land use. So, but we won't want to be sensitive, obviously, to the community, because they have long-term interest. They have been there for many, many years. And so consequently, I mean, that, I'm just looking at it from how would we enforce something like that, to verify that their guests, their people are getting that message.
Right. How about if we would compromise then? And we get notifications from forestry, the fire department, when, and Mr. Matika, you can chime in on who this would come from, when it is a high danger for outdoor burning, and actually then we go into periods when you are prohibited for burning, and that information is given to your guest, so that they are aware if we, and you need to give that to them, so that they are aware that it's an exceptionally dry time for our area, which it may not be from the area that they're from. So they are aware during their stay, they should not use the fire pit for those reasons.
Would that restriction be applicable to all homeowners on Panhandle during those times?
I think it is, isn't it? That if there are times when their burning is prohibited during certain times of the day, or in general, isn't it?
That's correct. So if part of the conditional use permit, the requirements are adherence to the provisions of the Virginia State Law of Fire Prevention Code. Is that correct, man? Is that still in there?
We do not have that in this particular one. We could certainly add that, but that's a state law.
Even if it's not a condition of the permit, it's still law. So we've adopted the enforcement provisions of the statewide fire prevention code. Open-air burning is regulated in the statewide fire prevention code and by forestry law. So with that, there are provisions in the statewide fire prevention code that regulate open-air burning, proximity within 50 feet of a structure. They have to take provisions to keep it from spreading from that pit to within 50 feet of a structure. So i.e., the foliage on the ground, dry leaves, they have to have that cleared away. That's all property owners within Warren County, not just the short-term pervert. As it relates to atmospheric conditions, drought, high winds, if we place a ban in across the entire county that goes into effect adherence to the forestry regulations. So ultimately, the open-air provisions are part of Virginia law that this property would have to adhere to, regardless if it's a short-term tourist rental or not, if open-air burning, if it's a single-family dwelling, they have to adhere to those same laws.
No. That's what, in my opening statement, I talked about, the code and the scope of that.
Statute spoke to this issue already.
Okay. Well, but if I'm from another area or out of state, I may not be aware of that.
Sure. And we would happily include
And that's what I mean. I would like to have that as part of your package
Yes, ma'am.
So that they are aware of that. Because if they're not, they're innocently going to go out there thinking they can do a fire that could get out of, and I think that's what the people here are concerned about. And honestly, I think that's protecting yourselves as well.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea.
That's all the questions that I had at this point.
Okay. Thank you again.
Mike, I have, my only question is, is that, and I think Matt answered it, is that I think the biggest concern for you guys is that you don't have a property manager. And if you have a property manager, then I think a lot of these issues go away, because then there's somebody who's within, you know, 20 minutes, maybe 30. I've been to Panhandle, and I don't know that you can get down Panhandle in 20 minutes. But anyway, I think that once you had a property manager, that that would be, so that is a part of the conditional use, Matt?
A property management plan is.
Okay. So what does that mean?
And that's provided basically by the applicant, by the property owner. And that includes contact information of whoever they have chosen, they've hired, they're them themselves, that contact information, so that if there is a problem, that person managing, whether it's the property owner or the hired property management company, are immediately contacted. In emergency situations, or there are certain situations, you know, Sheriff's Department or fire and rescue are going to be the ones that are immediately notified.
Well, that's who you're going to call if it's, if you're living here permanently.
I will mention that many of the conditional use permits approved for this, the property owner either lives within the county a short distance, lives next door to the property, or in one particular case, he lives in the property, and he just, he goes away, travels quite a bit, and, you know, he's available by phone. And then there are some that hire property management companies. There's one out of LaRae. I imagine, I can't give any names, but I imagine that there are real estate companies that have property managers or a property management division that they can maybe contact and see if they could find an affordable one that would at least be able to be available on an emergency basis.
So you mentioned in your opening that there were three additional conditional use permits off Panhandle, is that correct?
That's correct.
That already exists?
Yeah.
Is yours one of those? The gentleman who spoke?
No, he's off River Ridge, he's in your subdivision.
Oh, you're in my, yeah, okay. Yeah, you are in mine.
Yeah, the three that exist, the one property owner has, he actually has moved back to the county and lives there full-time. So it's on an inactive status. The other two, the one property owner, lives in the house, and he has a suite downstairs that he stays in if he's in town, if he's not in town, he's available, but the guests have the use of all the house except for his private dwelling, his domain.
Well, clearly, they had to have a property management plan, if that, if they
Right. They all have property management plans, yes, ma'am.
So they would know a property manager.
Right, right. And the other property owner I'll just mention, they live in one house, they bought a property adjacent to them, built a house, and that house is the short-term tourist rental. So, okay, so they are, and that's certainly a valid thing, this has come up a number of times. And so that may be something that, if you want to be specific about it, put it on as a condition, and, you know, the property owners can then work something out and have that in place with their property management plan.
I think if you just had somebody there in the event of an emergency, you're in DC, it's going to be difficult for you to get out here.
So I definitely agree for our, to have something like that for a property management plan. And to Kevin's point, I think what we don't want to do is feel rushed to pick someone we don't have a relationship with. So, I mean, sorry to volunteer you, Stephen, but, and what, he lives here full-time with his family, I'm sure he'd be happy to be listed until we build that relationship. I'm sure he'd be happy. He's living here, again, full-time with his family, so listing his name and number until we are able to build that relationship again.
No, you can switch that anytime.
Right. Yes. Yeah. Okay. I think somebody closer would help. And I would, you know, make a suggestion that trying to meet, and I know during COVID it makes it difficult to meet people, but to meet with your neighbors it makes it difficult to meet people, but to meet with your neighbors, you might find that somebody right there in your neighborhood would be willing to help you out there. I mean, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for them, but, you know... Communication with neighbors is the, you know, it's the basis of where you're going here. And I'm hoping by asking the questions I did, that they're hearing that, you know, we're concerned and we want to meet halfway here with everybody, so.
Ms. Colors, I'll just mention also, in the property management plan, and I can get with Fire Marshal Myattico, if there is a website that we can, that the property owners could put in their property management plan that the folks could visit before they start, you know, an open burning fire, if that is, again, going to be allowed and you strike this condition, that would be something we would mandate to be in that property management plan. And that the property owners would make sure that their guests would check that prior, prior to doing any kind of fire. Again, that's if you choose to strike that condition.
Is that a website that we create or is our...
It would be, I would ask him if there is a state website or a weather website that they utilize. I know the Department of Forestry may have something like that, but I would check with Fire Marshal Myattico.
I have one more question. And the longer we bring this up, we'll have more questions. But do you have a landline in your house?
Yes, so we have a landline. And we actually, since we were working from home there for those two months, we installed a cell booster. And so it is able, we're able to get Verizon service and AT&amp;T, which is great. We've been really pleased with that.
Okay, so you're going to leave that, leave that service in the house?
Yes, that's a permanent fixture.
As a permanent fixture. Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else. Anyone else?
Uh-uh. Well, we're happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we went through the questions from the staff, is, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm just going to go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. The public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make the motion, but it's going to be as it's written here. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the conditional use permit request of Kevin and Renee Rogue, Daniel and Samantha Nobles for a short-term tourist rental with the conditions as recommended and amended by the Planning Commission staff, which includes all six conditions.
I'll second that.
Additional concerns or questions? Shelley, could we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, Z 2020 dash zero nine dash zero one, Shelley Cook for an ordinance to amend or re-oddain Section 180 of the Warren County Code regarding the definition of use as and supplemental regulations for rural event facility. Mr. Petty?
Yes, good evening, board. Attached, you'll find the proposed amendment to the Warren County zoning ordinance. The applicant, Ms. Cook, is requesting a text amendment to allow rural events facility use by conditional use permit within the agricultural zoning district. This is currently in existing use in the rural residential zoning district currently. And amended are the supplemental regulations, again, that are already in the code. If you look through, we've really just amended it to clean it up some. I won't go through and read all of them, as I said, they're already existing. However, we have taken out B as lighting is already in the zoning ordinance, so it's just kind of a repeat thing. So we also removed the limit in the supplemental regulations as that would be part of the conditional use permit process. And we also removed the noise regulations, as again, that is already in the Warren County Code. And we also removed J that discusses the events manager. Again, that would be part of the conditional use permit process. This text amendment would be, while it is an application from Ms. Cook, who has also applied for a conditional use permit under this proposed use, this text ordinance is for the county as a whole. So this would be any agricultural zone property within the county. So I'm thinking of it that way. And again, we were just cleaning up the existing code as it was written. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any on this. And I believe the applicant is here, she would like to say anything. And she's also applying for the next item as well.
Any questions for our staff?
So this is, this code exists currently, and all we're doing is just cleaning it up.
We are cleaning it up and we are adding it again to the, currently it's only in rural residential zoning district. We are adding it to the agricultural zoning district as well. But again, it's by conditional use permit only. It would have to go through the process, again, public process.
So everybody would have to go through conditional use to get, to go through the application process?
Yes, ma'am. And again, that's mainly because of this specific use, each property that would apply for would, you know, have case-by-case options, you know, again, the occupancy load, lighting, all those things would kind of come into play access. So, and this is for countywide ag properties, conditional use permit would allow us to place those conditions on a specific basis.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Cook, would you like to come forward and say anything?
I don't want to talk, but I can't breathe in this much.
That's okay.
Good evening.
You can take it down.
Okay, thank you. I've been a resident of Warren County since I was seven years old. I've lived in the Fork District. And my grandpa had a farm, and I inherited most of that farm. And as you all know, in order, and just so that you guys understand the situation of where the property is, it has, it has its major front is on Lee Burke Road. So Loving Arms Assistant Living is right in front of where you return to go back to the property. That's my farm, and it's 50 acres back there. Forty-three point five, and then there's another five-acre tract. And I also have another five-acre tract to the left of the property. So without having a directional map, I'm just trying to give you a little orientation. My house is right in front of the Assistant Living. So it wraps around Loving Arms and goes to the back. So I have another six acres there. It's bordered by my son on the left, and then my other neighbor's on the right, and then Martin Road is to the complete rear of my property, which, when I build the rural events center, it's going to be more towards the center part of my property back. It wouldn't be within, like, 200 feet of any of the neighbors, so. And it would be using the Lee Burke Road as the access point. And part of what we're doing with, trying to do with the venue is to bring something that we just don't have in Warren County as a rural events center that we can use for people to not just have weddings, but have birthdays and to have conferences, other things that I have found as a businesswoman in the community, and I've been a business in the community, woman in the community since I was in my early twenties. We just, we don't have any place, you know? Our children are going outside to get married in other counties, and we have a beautiful venue, and I would like to be able to afford to use it. But then on the other side of it is, when you pay taxes on your property and you want to be able to utilize your property so that you can make a little income on it, you try to get creative to find something to do. So that's what I've done. And we've also are speaking with Piedmont Cellars. I told Taryn earlier today that that's just come up. They want to, it's a by right, it's an agricultural venue, they want to plant some grapevines there. So I am doing that as well. And I just think it'd be a beautiful place, and I'm welcome to take any kind of questions or comments from you all or the community.
So this is not built yet?
No.
And we'll have to go through, like, all the building process? But we are just approving your conditional use permit for this property, is that correct?
So this is just the zoning text amendment.
Okay, so this is...
So her conditional use permit would be the next public hearing?
Gotcha.
Yep. So this would open it up for all agricultural zone land. Right now, we only allow it in the rural residential.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, the two got melded together, and I am one of the, I get confused. Yeah.
Step A to step B, I think.
Yeah.
Does the board have any additional questions for staff?
Uh-uh.
The public hearing is now open. Shelley, do we have anybody signed up?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Final call? The public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Finding that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is appropriate for the public necessity, convenience and general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the proposed amendment.
I'll second it.
Any additional questions? Roll call, please, Shelley.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Absame.
Conditional use permit 2020 dash zero nine dash zero two, Shelley Cook for the rural events facility. Ms. Logan?
So this is for the actual use. Ms. Cook has requested to have a rural events facility on her property, which is located off of Lee Burke Road. It's approximately 41 acres in the Fork District. The facility would range from weddings to business venues. In my staff report, I go down through the supplemental regulations. VDOT did submit a comment letter that they had no objection, she would just have to have the commercial entrance off of Lee Burke Road. And then the Health Department did not have any objections, they just listed what she would have to comply with for the well and septic. And then building inspections submitted comments to, with no objection, just what she would have to comply with. The parking would need to be shown on her, on her plan in the buildings if the CUP is approved. The Planning Commission had a public hearing and recommended approval with the following conditions. The applicant shall comply with all Health Department, VDOT, Warren County building inspections, and Warren County fire and rescue regulations and requirements. Parking area for the event shall be in a location approved by the Planning Department. Property shall be in compliance with the noise ordinance of Warren County Code, Section 123. All events must be within, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 11:00 PM. The only access to the property for the events facility shall be off Lee Burke Road with an approved VDOT entrance. There were comments at the Planning Commission public hearing about the residents, the neighboring residents didn't want the traffic coming off of Martin Road, which is a private road behind the property, so that the access would be off of Lee Burke Road. The building's construction on the property for the rural events facility should be cohesive with the agricultural nature of the surrounding area and their appearance. And then staff was adding to address other concerns that we've had, calls to our office, that all buildings must be set back 100 feet from the property line. And then we talked about a maximum number of guests limited to 300. That was a question that has come up a lot, what would be the number of guests? The other, our other rural events facility was 150, but then we removed that from the ordinance. That was in the rural residential district. So the ag district usually are larger lots, and this one is 41 acres. The public hearing was properly advertised, all adjacent property owners have been notified, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And Ms. Cook is here as well.
Any questions or concerns from the, for the staff?
Just, the question that I have is, is the amount of traffic, has that been addressed? Like the VDOT, there's no issues with any?
The VDOT did not have any issues.
Okay.
I received a comment letter from them, it was just last week. And they, she would have to install a commercial entrance...
Okay.
On Lee Burke Road. But they did not have concerns about the traffic, so.
Is there already a commercial entrance on Lee Burke Road to the, to the residential home?
Not to this property.
Okay.
Not to this property.
Okay.
The nursing home is right in front of this property, which has a...
Well, but, so I was going to say, does it already have some sort of commercial entrance because it is a business? Is that already...
This is just right past that.
It's just past it, okay.
Yeah. Commercial, I mean, the facility there does have a commercial entrance.
It does, that's the question, is that there's already one commercial entrance, and so that'll be the next commercial entrance.
Right.
Got it, that's what I was questioning. So one is pre-existing to this road already?
Yes, the nursing home has been there a while.
Has there been any questions from the care facility at all?
We have not had any, any calls to the office. And I'm not sure if, who spoke at the public hearing, if anyone was from the Assistant Living Facility.
But you haven't had any...
They may be here tonight, I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right.
Is the, Mrs. Cook, do you wish to speak anymore?
No, I can speak, guys.
Okay, thank you. If there are no more questions from the staff, this public hearing is now open. Shelley, has anyone signed up?
Yes, my name is Thad Masagie. I live on 853 Dorn Road in the adjacent subdivision, South River Estates. And I think it's great what Shelley wants to do to develop this, but I do have concerns, and they need to be, it looks like some of them have been vetted out, that I was looking for what you were trying to do with noise and lights. But those are some of my main concerns that we have adjacent to that. The other one was traffic, which you brought up. Question is, is, I understand there's 300, a limit of 300 people, but what about overflow? You have Lee Burke Road, Sheva Jean along there, Rivermont, are we going to end up with no parking signs along those? Is there going to be enough? There's the senior living facility that's right there, is that going to be affected by some of that overflow? The other is, as far as traffic goes, we do not want, and you brought that up about Martin Road being used as a service road for this facility. So that's a concern that we have. And trespassing, you know? We don't know what kind of rural facility this is going to be. And we do know you have the general things, weddings, whatever, is there, is there going to be some kind of a concert at some point or something? Is there, are we going to have 300 people milling about? Are they just going to be there for that and then go home? I think even the Lee Burke Road, that's going to take a little bit of work, widening or whatever, but I, I think you're also going to have an impact on Rivermont, which is right there too. So, another thing is, I don't know what the plan is for, you know, for this building, how things are going to be laid out. But what about open storage that would maybe become adjacent or visible from our subdivision that they may have there for, you know, some of the things that go on there? And that's, that's just it? I just wanted to bring... I just wanted to bring that up for consideration, and I appreciate your time.
Shelley, has anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, no one else has signed up.
I'm sorry?
No one else has signed up.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lynn Morrison, and I live at 694 Dorn Road. And I echo everything that Thad had previously mentioned, but I wanted to reiterate just one other item. First of all, we are not against people doing what they want to do with their land. I, I, I think it's kind of a neat idea, but my concern is really the traffic. And when I say traffic, I mean, we're talking 300 people. It's not a lot. I didn't know that last month, and this is a, a good news. But what I'm concerned about is, as a person who travels on Lee Burke Road almost daily, because I live out here, where I think the proposed entrance for this venue, I, I really hope that you consider widening the road there. Because every time we come around that curve, we meet, we almost always meet somebody coming around that one curve by the elderly care home. And it is a concern, if that's where the entrance is gonna be. I really would consider widening that area and making it safe, because it's really not even safe now. And with weather and things like that, I just, just wanted to mention that, that's all. You know, I think that other, the other things have been addressed, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir, way back in the back.
Hello, Richard Marsella, 360 Martin Road. I have no concerns with the proposed plan. I do have a concern, there's a gate in the back half of that property. I do not need it removed, I would just like it shut and locked during events. Because people tend to just walk around, and that gate is relatively close to several lots, mine being adjacent to it diagonally. I just would like the gate blocked. I also do have a concern about that same curve. I have stopped multiple times to allow cars to come around that curve, because there's just, it's narrow at that little pinch point, right where that entrance is gonna be. So if we could address that curve, that'd be great too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Chuck Bowers, 315 Lee Burke, we're right there. That corner is really a big concern. I drive it at least twice, sometimes four times a day. Other than that, and as I understand, in between the nursing home and my neighbor's, the first house, is where the driveway is gonna be, or the entrance to the property. I'm always working, I never get a chance to see Shelley at home, or I'd ask her that myself. If, if that's exactly where it's going, do you know for sure? Or is there a, a plan that shows where?
There was a question to Shelley after, after we all spoke.
Okay, very good. The other comment I wanted to make, well, there's two. There really is nowhere for anybody to park on the road. I heard that concern mentioned. We don't have a berm, much of any kind, there's no, there's just no way people can start parking there, or the Sheriff's Department will be towing them away. You know, if it was a little wider, then we'd be at risk, like some other areas are. And the other comment I'd like to make, my wife and I have talked about this quite a bit. We like the idea of the event center over maybe having 15 or 20 houses put in there. Because that, that's our back view. So we're kind of in favor of this as well. Thank you.
Any additional people want to speak about on this? Mrs. Cook, could you come back up for just a second? I guess the biggest concern that we've heard so far is the entrance.
Yeah.
Is there another place to put the entrance?
No, it's been the farm entrance. And there's no other place that VDOT's going to allow that. That's why it is where it's at. And it's basically that curb, they've done several speed studies, RACY Engineering's done studies, and they found it to be safe. There's nothing else I can do. When I built the nursing home there, we did extensive studies. I agree with what they're saying, but there's not a thing I can do about that. We've had it looked at at VDOT. They reduced the speed for me from 55 to 45 because I spent so much time and money on it. I actually spent almost $10,000 for the safety of our community, and not a lot of people know that. So to get that reduced, you know, because you have to have so many speed studies in order to even make a petition, and then it's the county and them. So we did that back in 2006 and 2008. So that actually is what they said would, it would take to make that safe. So it would be right there, but there's enough parking that goes, the property is deep. And I don't have a problem with the gentleman, you know, locking the gate during events or whatever. That's not a big deal. But I, I own property on the other side. I own on Martin Road, so that's important for everybody to know. I have five acres over there as well. And that's how I get to my property, is through my farm and over to there. So that's important to know, to note, but I don't mind doing that. I have very good relationships with all my neighbors and care deeply about my community. I've spent a lot of time in the community, doing things for the community. So I, you know, I, I have a passion for it. And I'm, me and my family and my grandson are right there on that, above that corner. This isn't, it's as close to me as it is to them.
So I'm reading here that you have, that you're gonna have, because parking was an issue that I think several people brought up. And so I'm reading that you have to have one parking space per three guests, so that's 100 parking spaces.
It's not a problem.
That's gonna be what you'll have?
Yeah, it's not a problem.
And that's gonna be on your property, you never planned on?
Right, not at all. Right, no, it's on my property. There's almost 50 acres there.
Okay, so you're good with the parking? Then no one would be inclined to park out on Lee Burke, because that would cause?
No.
Yeah.
Not at all.
Okay.
And we have to provide that diagram in the site plan.
Right.
And the site plan has to be approved, and it has to be according to all of those regulations.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Cook.
Oh, you're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience by chance that would like to speak more on this? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that the board of supervisors approve the conditional use permit request of Shelley Cook for a rural events facility with the conditions recommended by the planning staff.
Second.
Can we get a roll call please? Or any additional discussion, excuse me? Could we get a roll call please, Shelley?
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Would like to K. The request for the approval of the compensation plan. Mrs. Chafell?
These are someone's glasses.
Somebody left their glasses up here?
Somebody leave their glasses?
Yeah, mine. The mask, the glasses. Hey, I'm not saying that. Thank you, Matt.
Mrs. Cook, I want to say thank you. Your turn.
All right, I'm back, okay. And thank you for earlier for the approval of the bonuses and the hazard pay. We really appreciate that on behalf of all of our employees. So the approved budget for this fiscal year included $280,000 in funding for a 1.5% COLA, a cost of living adjustment for our employees. And then it also included $300,000 in funding for implementation of Phase 2 of our compensation plan. Of course, both of these items were delayed due to concerns with revenue projections because of COVID. Revenue projections appear to be improving and starting to surpass some of last year, as a matter of fact. And as we had discussed at the work session earlier this month, staff has proposed moving forward with the implementation of both the COLA and Phase 2. So to accomplish those changes, you have in your packet there the list, the proposal items. And of course, your schematic list of classes is there for you to refer to. I tried to put everything on there, make it big, so we could see those little bitty numbers that had been requested. So you're, also included in your packet was a proposed salary scale. The COLA affects all of our employees who are on the graded salary scale, so it, it does not apply to our constitutional officers themselves, because their amounts are set by that comp board funding, for example. The salary scale is your spreadsheet. It details each position by grade. It goes with your schematic list of classes. And then the steps on each grade are denoted by the letters. So this proposal also includes a 2.5% increase or one step for employees who were hired prior to October 1st of 2019. Or, and also any employees who would have otherwise received increases, promotions, moved into new positions, they would not be eligible for this. I also want to note that this, these items do apply to our social services employees. So even though they have pay bands that are set by the state, they are local employees. So this would be additional local funding to those, to those employees. Also, this would include for positions that had previously been identified as substantially below market, some additional steps, kind of based on the category, which is listed there in your packet. And then some compression adjustments that were requested as recommended by the county administrator. And compression, that's a situation that occurs when there's only a small difference in pay between employees, regardless of their skills, their experience, and their tenure. So their years of service. That's when you have someone who comes in that may have, be making the same amount as someone who's already been with you and doing the same job, that might have five years of service, for example. So that, that's where you get compression. There are some position reclassifications that were listed there on your schematic list that were recommended by the county administrator. And we did take into account and included what the sheriff had requested on the communications officers, to change that pay band for them from a grade 5 to a grade 7. So that, that is included. We've also asked to include just the approval of adding the position to our classification system of the IT director, that's been recommended by the county administrator. This is in preparation for filling that role in the, in the future. It's just getting it into our classification plan. It also includes the recommendation or the request to upgrade the position for Taryn's admin assistant from part-time to full-time. We think that is very much needed, and that that position has been recently vacated. And there is funding available in her budget to cover that. And then last, it also includes reclassification of two deputy clerk 1 positions to 2s, to deputy clerk 2s, that something Ms. Moore had requested. It can be covered in her budget. She had proposed it, one of her most senior employees left recently. And she wants to just basically spread the savings. So it's, it's being done within her budget, but it requires those two positions to be upgraded to 2s. So it's no additional funding request there. I have noted the current estimated, the annual cost, including benefits, for both is just over $614,000. And note that this is a picture in time, so it's based on, it's a fluid number. It's based on current staffing. With the anticipated staffing changes that we have in attrition for the remainder of the fiscal year, we anticipate savings that will keep the, the funding well within the approved annual range. And even though there's going to be savings, because we're asking for a December 1 implementation, it's only seven months, we're very cognizant of those costs moving forward into the next budget year. So we try to keep within, you know, what, what's been set aside for that. So I am available for any questions that you may have.
I have, I have one.
Sure.
Deputy clerk, and maybe we can't speak to her, and I know she's not here, but I'm concerned with her next year. That she, she lost a permanent employee, and we're able to fill that need now. But what about next year? Is she gonna hopefully hire that new, that employee that she lost?
So, so it is replacing the employee that she lost. So it's not losing a position. It's just the employee that she lost was a senior employee who was higher up in the scale. She will be bringing the new person in at a lower rate.
Okay, just need to clarify that.
Yes, and I'm sorry that that wasn't clear, but it is not, she's not giving up, or giving up. It's just the savings that she has due to the salary of that person, spreading it amongst her existing, existing staff.
Thank you. Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
The public hearing is now open? Shelley, does anyone sign up?
No one.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on any of this, this topic at all? Final call.
This is not a public hearing.
It's not? Well, I'm doing such a great job.
No, your public hearings are over.
Put the sheet away. Okay.
It's just an approval by the board.
Got it, ma'am.
No worries.
Okay, is, could I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board of supervisors approve the compensa, compensation plan as proposed effective December 1, 2020.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional questions or concerns? Shelley, roll call please.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Congratulations, Mr. Director.
Motion for adjournment?
We've got L.
You got L?
Just saying, so we don't say anything.
You got L? We don't have anything for L.
Oh, additional, any additional? No new business?
No additional new business? Now adjourned. I move we adjourn.
I'll second it.
We are adjourned, thank you.